I'm going to start my. And with that AWS machine, I'm going to bring up my instance and from there is where I'm going to start my work. So let me say I'm back to Mumbai. So I guess I was doing everything on Mumbai yesterday. Let me just check. No, it was not in Mumbai. I think I was working in London region. Okay, so this is the Docker instance which I had spin up yesterday. I kept it in stopped mode and I told that if you keep it in stop mode, it will not be causing a trouble for you. In cost wise, if you keep it up and running, then it will be a problem for you. Yeah, so I have kept my instance in a stopped mode. Now what I'm trying to do is I'm trying to bring it up and I'll first make sure that my Docker environment is up and running. And after that, I will make sure that I start my work. So this is my Docker instance. Let me refresh this guy. I can see it is running. Now if I go here now, I'll see a new IP address. Let me connect to this new IP address. So only the IP address has changed. Other things will remain as it is. So here I need to mention EC two minus user at the rate. Whatever IP address you have, go to appearance, change the font size what you have, sixteen, okay? Go to SSH auth auth. And then go to browse and go and take a key. So I think this is the key which I had created yesterday. Just let me validate whether the key is correct or not. So Docker morning is what I've been using. So let just take the correct key. Okay, and just open it up. So with these details, your machine will start and you will be able to log into your cloud environment. Now, once I login, I login at the as an EC to user, I'll update myself as a root user. Now, as a root user, I can also change this IP address. So I can say host name and say docker server. And I'll say sudo sudo hyphen, sorry, sudo sudo hyphen. So I am logged in as a root user to my Docker server. I'm all set. Now I will come here and try to get my work done. So my Docker engine is up and running. Let me just check that. Docker minus minus sorry, service Docker status. Service Docker status. So I can see it is loaded but inactive. So I'll just bring it up. I'll just come here and say start. And I want that in future, this problem should not happen that every time I should I have to start it. So I will write a small command for that. I will say system C T L enable Docker. This command means that whenever I will start stop my system, at the same time you also go ahead and bring my Docker server down and then bring it up. So this is what I mean when I say enable Docker server. Now my Docker is up and running. I can simply go ahead and see the status. And it is up and running. So my Docker CLI is running, my Docker container, my Docker demon is running. Now I have to link myself to my Docker hub. Not to link myself to my Docker hub, which is the default repository, I will go ahead and I will log into my registry. So I told that you should create a account on up dot docker dot com. And from here, you can go ahead and take whatever you want. I have created a free account, so it's it will ask me to upgrade. But as of now, I'm not upgrading. I'm more concerned about this explore section and here I'm going to choose images as per my requirement. Now you, let me say you have a requirement of a database. So you will be looking for images of MySQL. And you can find images related to MySQL. Now let me say you you lead a image for Jenkins. Okay, so I got Jenkins. Now let me say I want to work with a software called NGINX. Now what is the software NGINX for? Now if you don't know about NGINX, let me come here. And let me read about this stuff. So it says this particular software is NGINX and it acts as a load balancer and also as a reverse proxy somewhere here it will be written. So it is acting as a load balancer and as a reverse proxy. Now what is reverse proxy? So to make it simple, let's understand it like this. So let me say this is my web server and I'm trying to connect to this web server from internet. Over the internet, I cannot guarantee that everybody is a genuine user. There may be some malware or virus. So now I'm exposing my inter my web server directly. That will create a problem. Now if that the case, I can kind of put a wall of security. That wall of security for me will be my proxy server. So I'll put a reverse proxy server here like NGINX. So whatever traffic is coming, it will come to my proxy server. It will never hit my the web server directly. Now because it is not hitting my server directly, there is no there is no concern of getting all these problems, okay? So NGINX acts like a reverse proxy. It will not allow the traffic to directly hit the web server. And second, if there are more than two, three servers, it will act as a load balancer. It will see which machine is least occupied and based on that it will also do the work distribution. So this is about NGINX. Now I'll be using this NGINX server to get my work done. So let me take this guy and start. So I know that there is a software or there is a content called NGINX. Now how can I use this? So it says you can use this image by running all these commands. So I'll come to all these things. But before that, I will come here and it says if you want to use this image, do a Docker pull and the NGINX. But I don't want to pull the latest image. If I put it like this, it will take the latest image. I don't want the latest image. I can come here and say tags and it tags, I can go with the version which I want to. So let me say I'm looking for one point two three, one point two two pearl. So here is the command. It says Docker pull NGINX. Pulling the tag ID. Now what I'm going to do is I'm just simply going to copy this. Come here and before running this command, I will say Docker images. Are there any images available? So I can see no, there's nothing available. So I'll go ahead and say Docker pull NGINX one point three, one point two three. Now what you see here is these are the layers. I told image is nothing but it's a union of file systems. So this is one file system, one, one. So these are the file systems. And finally, it says that I've downloaded the new image of NGINX one point two three from my docker.io library, which is my hub dot docker dot com. So as of now, if I come here and say Docker P S minus A. So Docker images, my bad. Images. I will see that I have downloaded the image of NGINX. The tag is one point two three. This is the image ID and it has been updated by NGINX thirty one hours ago and it is around one forty two M B. So this is my image. Now, using this image, I can create a container. So I told you that container is nothing but a running version of that. So this is a static version. This is a static image which resides in my Docker hub. I want to create a container out of this. How can I do it? So here if I come, I can go to the documentation. To the page overview and here it tells me how to use it. So these are the commands. This is the command. Now if you see this command, there are many things here. So it says Docker run. Now there is something called minus minus name, okay? And it says give me some name. So I'll say sample NGINX. Any random name you can give. Sample NGINX. Now if you don't give a name, then a random name will taken. Okay, I am giving a name. So that the random name is not picked up. Then if you do it minus D, minus D is detach mode. So if you don't run in detach mode, the other opposite of that is attach mode. So if you run it in attach mode, what will happen is it will go and block your machine. I'll show you both of them. And this is called port forwarding. So internally, internally, it will run at eight zero port number. Okay, but externally I wanted to run that eight zero eight zero. So this is what I'm doing. It is called port forwarding. All these details are mentioned here. Okay, but and this is telling some content of NGINX, but I am running NGINX one point two three. This is what I picked right. So I will say I'm running NGINX one point. So now this is the command. Now this is a complete command. It says Docker run this NGINX image which I have one point two three in my local, give it a name as sample NGINX. It is a detach mode. It is port forwarded internally. It will run at eighty. Externally, it will run at eight zero. Let's run it. I get some output here and my screen is free. It is not occupied. It is not captured by someone else. So if I come here and say Docker P S minus P. So Docker P S minus A is Docker, what all the processes are running in your application. So I says that this is the container ID which is running. This is the container ID. And this is the image which you're using, one point two three. And this is the name, this is the command which is running. Okay, it was created some fourteen seconds back. The status is up and running. And the port if you see, it is saying eight zero eight zero. See here. It says internally it is running at eighty, but externally it is exposed to eight zero eight zero. Okay, and the name is given as sample NGINX. Now what happens if I don't provide this name? I don't provide this parameter name. Okay, and it will conflict. So I'm giving a different port number here, okay? So at this time, I am running without the name parameter, okay? What will happen? See here. Optimistic list code. So a random name was given. If you don't give the name parameter, then a random name will be given. Then if you don't give this port forwarding. What will happen? See here, hopeful Jang, a random name was given. And here, see here, it is not running externally. It is only internally running. Now, the last one is I remove this guy also minus D. So if I remove this minus D also, it will run, but see it has blocked my machine and it has blocked and I cannot do anything. So if you want that your machine is blocked, then you can run in attach mode. The default is attach mode, but I don't want it to be blocked. So I'll do control C, come out and if you now come and see automatically it has exited means it has came out, okay? So exited means it is no more running. So what I'm trying to do here is I'm trying to run my image. But with certain parameters and those parameters are these. Generally, when you run, you use these parameters. You say Docker run and this much. This is mandatory, but these things are good to write like minus minus name. You give a name of your choice. You say detach mode and you say port forwarded to a certain port number. So these are the things which we are going to do now. There are many containers which I have created and all these containers are consuming space. Docker P S minus A. So I created like one, two, three, four. So I've created some four containers. So what I'm going to do is I'm going to delete these containers. So if a container is in stopped state, okay, this is you can see is in stopped state. So if I directly go here and say Docker R M is removed and the container ID will be removed because it is in stopped state. But if a container is running, you can see here it is up and running. So if I try to remove it by running this command, Docker R M. It will give me an error. It says there is an error response from demon. You cannot run this because this container is in not is not in stopped state. If you want to run it, first stop the container and then you run it or force stop the container. Something like this. Docker R M. And here you see minus F. So minus F is for force pull stopping. So you have forcefully stopped it. Now others also you want to stop. So you can come here and give the container ID. So this is the container ID. This is the container ID. And now if I come here and say Docker P S minus A, I will see nothing is running. Now. The problem with Docker containers are that the Docker containers are ephemeral in nature. So when I say ephemeral in nature, they can easily be created and easily be destroyed. But assume that I'm running a container and there is a lot of data inside the container. In that case, I, the moment I delete my container, the entire data is lost. Suppose I was running a container some time back. I just showed you that I'm running a container. So this is my container. Now a container is running. Can you check Docker P S minus A? So this is the container which is running. Now you want to check the container, okay? What is happening inside the container? So there are three ways. One, you can go inside the container. So for that the command is Docker exec minus I T. And then the container ID and then bin bash. I'll share all these commands with you so that you can practice all these things. But I will recommend that when the videos are shared with you, go ahead and type these commands because the moment you start typing, you will come to know what is expected out of you. If you simply copy paste, may not work. So I will recommend go ahead and use this command. So I am trying to go inside. So I say Docker exec is execute. I T is interactive terminal mode and then this is the container ID and bin bash. So now if you see root at the rate Docker server from there I move to root and delete the container ID. And here if I do ls minus L, I can see these many things are there inside the container. Now let me say in this bin folder or here only I'm creating a file touch sample dot P X T. Okay, ls minus L. So I can see this sample dot P X T. But the moment this container gets deleted, this sample dot P X T will also get deleted and I will lose it forever. Okay? So let me exit from here and say that I'm going to delete the container. Okay, how to do it? So first you have to do Docker yes minus A. This is my container. Docker R M minus F. This is the container ID. Just delete it. Okay, now again I'll bring it up. They get a new container, right? But is the folder there, the one which I created? Is the container there? Is the content there? No, that sample dot P X T is not there. So this is a problem. And the problem says that if you delete your container along with that, the data stored inside the container will also go. So what we should be doing is we should go ahead and make our data persistent. So if you want to make your data persistent, you can come here and say I want to use something called Docker volume. So if you see here, this is what we are trying to do. So we are trying to use Docker volume. Okay, now this thing, how to use it? How how do you use this guy? Docker volume? So what you can do is you can start here and you can see Docker of Docker volume. So here it says how to use volume, you can use it. If I come all the way here, these are the ways in which I can make my data persistent, persistent in the sense. Even if my container is deleted, the stuffs will remain there, the data will remain there. There are two ways of doing it. Either do it via volume or do it via bind mount. Okay, so when you use a volume, the restriction is that the data will only be stored in the Docker area. I'll show you what is this Docker area. And when you use bind mount, you can use any storage of your type, okay? So a very common interview question is what's the difference between bind mount and volume? So bind mount will help me to store the data at any location. I can do anything. But when I'm using Docker volume, I can only and only store the data in container area. What is this container area? So let me come back here and I'm going to exit from here. Clear everything. Now I will talk about what is this Docker volume. So let me just come here. And as of now, I don't know anything about Docker volume. So I'll say Docker one minus minus help. So here it says that in Docker volume, these are the commands. You can create a volume. You can inspect that volume. You can list that volume. You can prune it. It is unused. You have to remove it. And R M is you can remove. So these are the commands which I am going to work with. So the first command which I'm going to work with is Docker volume L S. Now here it says there is no volume. Okay, so I'm going to create one. So I'll say Docker volume create and let me say I'm creating volume one. I've given a name. So volume one. Now if I come here and say Docker volume L S, I can see there is a volume created with volume one. But it says that the volume one will store the data in Docker area. Now what is this Docker area? Because here in this diagram, it is saying that this volume will store the data in this Docker area. What is this? So let's do one thing. Let's clear out all these things. Come here and see Docker volume inspect. Okay, wall one means I want to see what is inside wall one, which is my volume. See here, this is your Docker area. So whatever you want to do, whatever you do, the data will go and sit here only. So whatever data is stored in your container, inside the container, that will go and sit here. So the scenario will be something like this. This is my AWS account. This is my Docker. Here this is my container. And let me say inside the container, there is some data. As of now, I'm taking that data and putting it here. And this is my Docker volume. So even if the container is gone, this data will stay intact. Okay, so this is what I'm trying to achieve. So let's go ahead and achieve this thing. So this is very easy to do. Now we just do a small thing. Okay, so please be a little loud. Is my voice not that clear? Okay, I'll I'll take care of that. So what I have done here is I have just now created a volume and I have done something like this. Docker volume L S. So I can see my volume is there. Then I went ahead and said Docker volume inspect volume one. So this is the Docker area or this is a location where by default it will store. You cannot change this location. One second. Hey, sorry guys, I got distracted. So I am saying that this is the place where the data will always get stored. So if I go to this place right now, C D and that place. As of now, if I come here and say L S minus L, I see nothing is stored here, okay? So this time what I'm going to do is I'm going to spin up a container but with the use of this volume. How to do that? So here down the line, you will see how to work with this. So they have given examples. I will have done the exactly same thing. Docker volume, Docker volume. Inspect, this is the Docker area which we are talking about. It says using this minus V, you can start your container and this is how we are going to do it. So let me just remove the unnecessary stuff. So volume name for me is volume one. And this is okay, so this is my command. Docker run minus D for detach mode, minus name for name, whatever name you want to give to give. Minus V, I'm using my volume and I'm saying any data which is inside the container in this folder, you map it to this guy. Other way around, any data which is there in volume one, you map it to the data inside the container. So these are two storages. This storage is inside the container and this storage is my Docker area. So those both will be mapped up. Any data which is in volume one will go and sit in backslash app folder. And any data which is in app folder will go and sit it here. And I will be using my NGINX latest image for that. So in case you don't want to use latest image, I already have one point two three. So this is what I'm going to do. If you want, you can add this port forwarding also. In case you want minus P eight zero eight zero. And eight zero. So this is my port forwarding, okay? So let me just come down here and check if I have something running Docker yes minus A, sorry. So this is this thing. Let me just take this guy. Docker R M minus F and I'm removing it. Okay, again I'm checking. There's nothing here in my Docker area. If you're not giving the folder path, where will it store? It will give you error. If you don't give a folder path, it will give you an error. So as of now, you see there is nothing here in my Docker area. This is my Docker area. This path varlib Docker volume. This is my Docker area. Now what I'm going to do is I'm going to run this. Here. Docker run minus D minus minus name, any name you give. Port forwarding, volume one is to be mapped with backslash app. NGINX one point two three is what I am running. So I see a container now. Docker P S minus A. I can see a container. Now I am saying that if you can, if as of now, I'm here P W D. Okay, so this is my Docker area. So if I create a file here, it will also created it get created in my container. Let me do that. Nano or test dot P X T. Let me say I've created a file test dot P X T and I will say this is a sample file, okay? So I can see there is a file getting created here, test dot P X T. Which part in my Docker area, which is my volume one as per this statement? This is my Docker area or the volume one. Now according to this thing, it should also go and sit inside this particular location. So this is my container ID. I will go inside the container. So I'll say Docker exec minus I T. Okay, the container ID and then bin bash. L S minus L. Now I see there is an app folder here. I have copied it to app folder. So I'll say C D app. And I'll do L S minus L. You can see your file text test dot P X T. September twenty second, fourteen, sorry, September fourteenth, twenty two bytes. So if I come back here, the same file. Twenty two bytes, September fourteenth, fourteen zero one, test dot P X T. If I cat cat in the sense, I want to view the content. I can see this is a sample but I want to add something. Now nano will not work here. So I will do something like this. Echo adding new line from container. Okay. And I will move this data to my test dot P X T. And I will move this data to my test dot P X T. So this is. Moving one entry to my file because Nano will not work inside the container. That's why I am doing it like this. So I do cat. And then this test dot T X T. So I can see two lines are there, but I am inside the container, right? Now I will exit means come out. And here I will again view the content test dot T X T. And it is saying adding new line from the container. So basically what I am seeing is these two storages are interlinked or they are mapped to each other. Okay? So by this, I can achieve data persistence. Now you will say how? Let me show you. Now let me clear all these things. Let me say Docker. Docker P S minus A. So this is my container and inside the container, there is some data. I am deleting it. Docker. R M minus F. And then you are deleting. So as of now, if you come here and say Docker P S minus eight, nothing is there. But what I am doing is next time when I spin up my container, I will run this piece of command. I will say you bring up your container, okay? Whatever name you want to give, but map volume one to app folder. Means whatever data is there in volume one, put it in the app folder. So I have my backup here. I am putting it in app folder. Docker P S minus eight. This is my container. Docker exec minus I T. And bin bash. And I can see C D app folder L S minus L and I can see my data. Okay, so this is what is the benefit of using a volume. We also say it's a Docker volume. And let me clear all these things. And exit from here. And now if you want, you can go ahead and say. That I want to delete this container. Go ahead. There is no problem because I already have the backup of my data. Okay? Now. How is it different from my mount? So for mount, I will take this guy. This piece of code. And I will just make changes to this code. Okay, so this is the code for that. Okay, so everything is same instead of okay minus P. Eight zero eight zero. Eighty. All these things will remain same. The only place where I am making a difference is instead of using minus B flag for volume, I am using mount flag. And I am saying source. So you say what is your source? You tell which part you want. So this can be customized. This can be customized. Means you can put any path of your choice. Suppose I put as volume one, which I already have. You can put. Here. Backslash temp means in my source or in my. Machine, I want to put it in temp and in my target, I want to put it in app folder. So this flexibility you get when you use. Mount rest, all the things will remain as it is. The feature wise and all, it remains as it is. That's the only thing which will change. Sorry, I am running the latest image. So it is pulling the latest image. But there is no problem. Docker P S minus eight. And you can see this Docker exec minus I T. Bin bash. Go inside. And you can see your tester data. The data is persistent. So this is the major difference between these two. And this is a very common interview question where they say that I want my data to be persistent. But the moment you say that I want my data to be persistent, I have these two options here. Either use bind mount or volume. When you use a volume, you are limited that you will be only and only using this particular path. Okay, and when you use bind mount, you can use any path of your choice. So what I am going to do now is. I will open it for questions. If anyone has any questions, you can go ahead and after that I will continue with my stuff. This will need practice. The commands which I am using, I am going to give you all the commands. So I am going to share my repository with you and that will contain all these things. So if you start your work. Docker installation, how to install Docker, how to work with Docker volume, the basic commands, all these things will be here. Fine. Anyone having any questions?
Yes, please. Big question on the. Bind mount, if it's a local machine like on, you have a sand value called slash data. So if I add the slash data as a source. Does that work?
Yes, it will work. So whatever is your source, you mentioned the path. Obviously, it should be accessible. The moment you mention that path, it will take that particular item as a source. It can be a N F S, it can be a file, a file system, it can be a. Storage on cloud, whatever you want, you can use that. Only that path has to be given. It will take the data from there or it will go and. See, I did not get your question, but I will tell you that. At any point of time, if you want to keep a backup, let me say I am not willing to keep it the same machine. Because the place where Docker is there, at the same machine, you are taking a backup. So there are chances that both may go wrong. So you want to keep it in S three bucket or you want to keep in a cloud environment. So you can give source at that path. It should be accessible via Docker and then you can go and put it there. So the backup is always at a different location. How to mount a E F S? Mounting a E F S, I will show you later. That will come later. That's external storage. So E F S mounting, I will show you later. Sir, to run the Docker, first we have to create a Linux environment. It's not at all important. I told you that Docker is compatible with all the softwares. Whether you are using a Windows machine, you are using a Mac, we are using Linux. In Linux, you are using Debian, Ubuntu, Sushi, anything, it is compatible. So it doesn't matter whether you are running it on a cloud environment or anywhere else.
Can I ask the question?
Yeah, please.
Yeah, so you see when you created this volume. And by default, where is it located? Like the path.
Why is it located? Now this is the architecture which.
No, no, so it's where it is located because you know you.
It is in my local machine. It is in my local machine.
Okay, but where is the default path?
Where is the default? So I told you, right? This is the default location. This is the default location. This is the Docker area. It will always go and store your data here.
So we, because we've downloaded this. So this is in the E C two machine, right?
This is on the E C two machine.
Okay, so wherever we've created this, wherever this Docker has been installed, there is a volume like directory and then that's where it's located.
I can show you the same thing diagrammatically. See here. So this is your container. Okay, this is your, okay, or I will put it like this. That will be much better. So I have a storage. This is my E C two instance. I am running it on cloud environment. This is my E C two. I told you when I start my work, I get eight G B of storage. Now in this, I have installed Docker. Inside this Docker, I have a container. Now this container has some data which is inside this and I am storing it in the Docker area. This is the area. This is the path for that. So. This is the path for that. Now, if you have a requirement where you say that I don't want to store it here, I want to store it outside somewhere. Like a separate file system. So then you have to mount it. And it goes external. But if you come here.
Okay, okay. So mount, that's the main difference between volume and mount. We can choose the file system.
Here you can choose the source and destination. Here it is default. You cannot change it. But at the end of the day, both are doing the same task.
Okay. What's the quantity of storage can the volume carry? So now you have eight gig. And you have a file that is maybe up to nine gig.
Then it will not, no. So see, it is like my stomach has a capacity to eat a certain amount. But if you provide me more than that, obviously I will not be. So the same thing will happen here also. It will fail.
Okay, so so the volume is consuming parts of your storage?
Yes, yes.
Okay, that makes sense. Thank you.
Yeah, yeah.
For saving the data, we are using mount. That by using mount, we can save it in the. Only Docker hub or.
External storage. I told mount will allow you to store the data anywhere you want.
Okay, like in GitHub.
No, GitHub is not the location. GitHub is for source code. When I say external storage, it can be S three, it can be a file system, it can be a block storage, physical storage with a hard disk, something like that I am talking about.
Okay, adding to that, if the E C two goes down, even though we can paste the data in the mount, in the mount options, right?
Yes, in case you have used a mount, in case you have put your data here only, then your E C two is down, everything is gone.
Okay, only mount works then in this situation.
Only amount works then. Because you are storing the data externally. So let me say you have a lot of data in your laptop. You want to keep it secure. So you took a hard disk and you put it in the hard disk. Now even if your laptop crashes, crashes, your data is safe because it's outside.
Got you. Thanks.
Because we are creating any Docker, like Docker volume, we are giving any capacity there, like this much G P.
It is, it is by default. So.
Like how we will come to know that this is utilized fully utilized. So we should not use.
Those things, those things, those additional features Docker does not provide. So if my system has eight G B of data, then Docker will keep using this data till the point it is available. So the moment it is like exhausted, so I can do something like this. D F minus H. So this will tell me how much data is like, see here. So it says as of now, I have eight gigs of data, two point one is used by my machine, six gigs are available. So around some twenty six percent is used. And once it is done, 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 it cannot, you cannot put any more data.
Okay, if see if I want to like copy seven, suppose sixty B is file, sixty B data is available now. Suppose without checking, if I want to copy seven G B file, it will fail. The operation will fail, but Docker will be remaining same. Docker container.
Docker container will remain same, but the copy operation will fail. Suppose we have to store data in S three using mount method where we have to provide the path in your source. So here you have to provide your, here, provide your path. But your container should be able to access the S three storage. So E C two and S three should be able to talk to each other. That is mandatory. Okay? Now, let's move on. Now many a times what happens is that whatever images you are getting from hub dot docker dot com or G C R or E C R, wherever you are getting it from, that may not be sufficient. Okay, so when I say it is not sufficient in the sense, I need some additional stuffs there. But I am not getting in from the default image. So let me say I go to hub dot docker dot com. Hub dot docker dot com. And here I am picking up this default Enginix image. Wait, N G I M X. Okay, now if I, if I am using this image, one point two three, this image, okay, click on this. Now if I go inside, I can see that somewhere this code has been written, which is nothing but a file system. So I told. Image is nothing but a file system. So you can see this images, this thing is written by the company itself. Now on top of this, I want to make some changes. There are a lot of things, a lot of codes written. So. There are few keywords which you can see here. Okay? So if I start here, I can see the first keyword as from. Now in Docker world, what we say is that for any, anything, it's true. We say if why to reinvent the wheel again? It means if I have to do a certain requirement, thirty percent is already there. Why should I not use that thirty percent and create everything from scratch? So one Docker image is already there. So I take that as a base image and start my work on that rather than doing everything from scratch. Can I do everything from scratch? Yes, you can do everything from scratch, but it will consume a lot of time and C P. So we avoid doing that and we take a base image. So all the Docker images which you will see will be. Coated something like this. There is a base image and on top of that, they will do the changes. From is the keyword to take that base image. Then I have label which will be telling me what's the. Label is nothing but your comment kind of thing. Then you have environment variables. Then you use run command. Now run command is the command which will, you will be using to execute something. So on this base image, I want to execute something. So these guys have lot of things to execute. So they are putting everything here. Then there is a copy command which will tell you. The copy process. So from source to destination, if something has to be copied, then there is a copy command. On top of that, some places you will see add command is also there. Now again, there is a very common interview question. What is add command? How is it different from copy? Anyhow, I will cover all these things. Then you have an entry point. Entry point is nothing but it is the first line which is executed. Then it is very similar to C M D. So C M D and entry point are almost same. This can be overwritten. This cannot be overwritten. So I will explain all these things in detail. But for time being, just assume that entry point and C M D are same. They are the first line which has, which will be executed. Then expose means I told you the port is running internally. So this is the port which it is. So this is running internally at eight number port number, eight zero port number. And that's why this expose command is there. And stop signal is nothing but in case it is not running, then you should send a signal that it has crashed, something like this. So this is a base image. I already have this image. So this one point two three I already have. So if I come here and see Docker images. I already have this image one point two three. Okay, this latest I don't want. So I can do something like this. Docker R M I. It's not R M, R M I and the image ID. Both images have the same ID. So if I delete both, we will get deleted. Okay, let me not delete it. So here I already have the image. Now this image, whatever they are providing me is not sufficient. I need more. Okay, so for that more, I will create a file called as Docker file. One single word, Docker file. Okay? And here I will also write how they have written. Okay, so here I already have a code here Docker file. I will simply explain this and I will just copy paste this piece of code. So here, wait, this is not what I want. Okay, now if you see this, that's a simple thing here. I am seeing from Enginix latest. I don't want latest. Let me make it one point two point three. So I am saying take the base image of Enginix one point two point three. And on that image, you go ahead and run this command A P T minus Y update. Now why am I running this command? I am saying if there is some update which is coming from the operating system itself, do it. Now why am I using A P T? Why not Yum? Because this Enginix is a, I just now showed you. This Enginix is not a Amazon Linux. It's a Debian machine. So on Debian. This NGX is not a Amazon Linux, it's a Debian machine, so on Debian, I will be using this command, apt. So it's like yum only, but because it's a Debian machine, I'm using apt, so I'm saying run this command, apt, update minus Y. Then on top of that, you go ahead and install a software called Git, by running this command, apt, install, Git. Now there will be no one to approve it, so I'm giving minus Y here only, third command I am saying apt, install Apache two, another software. Then I'm saying, there's a copy command, so in my source, I will have this file, you go ahead and copy it in the target. Or inside the container here, so I'm having three run commands. One copy command and finally the CMD command, so I told CMD is like an entry point, so it will be the first. So what CMD command will do is, I'll show you, so suppose this is my Docker container, one second. Once again. Suppose this is my Docker container, so this CMD will kind of make a hole here. It's not exactly a hole, but kind of a hole, so that these commands which I'm trying to execute, will go and get executed inside the containers. Okay, so this is what I'm trying to do, so CMD will create a hole and then once the machine is, all the work is done. It will run this piece of command, means which is nothing but the demon off, means when you install something, what you do, you restart your application, so this guy will also restart. I will explain this thing in detail, when further we are dealing with customized images, but as of now, just remember that if you want to do some ad hoc run. Some commands you want to run, you do like this, if you want to copy something from your source, this is on my EC two instance. And this is inside the container, I use this particular piece of command. Okay. Then, if I have this CMD thing, this will create an entry point here and run all these commands inside the container, so this is what I have right now. So I'm going to run this, okay, now, for this, I also need this because I told I will have something on my source like this. So as of now, let me do one thing, uh CD, uh sorry. I should have created here, but that's also okay, so let me just create it here, actually I created at a wrong location, this data file I created. Anyhow, you can create there, there also, that's not a problem, let me go back there only, so let me just say. You'll get confused, let me just clear all these things, I'll create that file again. I'm here at root, I'm going to create here only, okay, I'll say nano. Docker file. Nothing, dot txt, nothing, Docker file. Go ahead and take this piece of code. Put it here. Let me delete all these things, just not delete it, again I have to do it. Hmm, so this is the command, I'm not running latest version, I'm running one point two point three. Okay, this is what I'm running, I will create this file anyhow, index dot HTML. Control X, Y, done, and I'll also create a file called index dot HTML. So I'm doing customization, whatever I am getting from the Docker hub, on top of that, I'm doing a customization, so I'll write a simple HTML page. This is. HTML. Okay, control X, Y, and, so as of now, if you come here, you can see two things are there, Docker file and index dot HTML. Now, this is a Docker file, this is just a file, okay, I want to convert it into. A image, so I do something like this, Docker, okay. Docker build. Means, whatever is there in this Docker file, you make it as an image, so Docker build, okay, before that I'll do one more thing. I will say Docker login, so Docker login is nothing but, what is your username, basically your hub dot docker dot com username. So my username is Vikas nine nine three four one, sorry, Vikas two four seven seven five. This guy. So this is my user ID, Vikas two four seven seven five, so I'm just saying Docker login. I will use my username and then password, password if I remember correctly. Okay, so it gives me login succeeded, means my username and password is correct. Okay, now what I will do is, I have these two things here, Docker file and index, now I will. Use this and create my own image, so I will say Docker build. Okay, I am going to give a name, so I'll say minus T for tag. My user ID is Vikas two four seven seven five, when you are creating, you give your ID, okay, don't give my ID. Vikas two four seven seven five, okay, and whatever name you want to give, so let me say I'm giving EV, EV, EN. NGINX, and I want to give the version as one point six seven, okay, something like this I have given. Small problem here. Okay, so I'm saying Docker build minus T for the tag, this is my image, what I have given. Okay, Vikas two four seven seven five, EVN NGINX colon one point six seven, this is what I have done. Okay, this is the name I have given, okay, and then what do you want to run, so you want to run your Docker file, where is the Docker file, it's here only, just give here a dot. So this is the command, Docker build minus T, this is the name, first is my username in Docker hub. Second is the image name which I want to give, and the third one is tag, and then I'm saying dot, dot because the Docker file is here. If the Docker file is somewhere else, you give the full path, dot, so what it will do is, see here, it is trying, let it execute. So it is trying to execute my entire thing, so let it execute, then I will. So now you can see this has worked, let me go all the way here at the beginning and see what all happened actually. So this is my command, this is what I did, Docker build minus T and then the name, then the tag. And then dot, this dot is important, okay, don't forget this dot, now it says, sending the build context. To Docker demon, means I'm trying to work with your image. In your image, there were some six lines, the first line says from NGX one point two three, so it's already there, so it took. The second command is run, apt update minus Y, so it is running the command, some. Uh warnings are there, but it is running, then the third is run, apt install Git, so it is installing Git for me. Some warnings are there, that's okay. Fourth command is install Apache two, okay, it is doing that. Now the fifth command is, copy this index dot HTML to this location, so I'll check, and the sixth command is do a demon off. So this is done, now if I come here. Okay. Dot is for what? Dot is for my file, so I told. I have my Docker file here, so when I'm running this command, I will run it like this, Docker build, dot, dot means the file is here only, okay, like this. If you run it again, it will not harm you, that same image will re, will be recreated. Docker build minus T, so whatever name you had given, give that name, okay, and then. Dot, so dot means this Docker file. Now if you come here and see, Docker images. You will see that a customized image is available here, with a new commit ID, okay, and if you go inside this. If you go inside this image, okay, you can do whatever you want to, so let me say, this image I will use to create my. New container, so I'll do something like this, Docker run minus D, okay, and then minus minus name. Custom. Container. Then you say minus P for port forwarding. And this time I will not run other images, I'll run this image, colon one point six seven. Now come here and say Docker, some error came, that was such okay, ignore that error. So now if you come here. You can see your custom container is getting created. And you are using this particular image, and this is your Docker container. And you can do whatever you want to with this container, now, you will say, okay, I just now created it, but what if if I want to share it with my friends? So you can do something like this, Docker. Images. And I will say, Docker, this time I'm not going to pull, I'm going to push, so I'll say Docker push, this is my image. And this is my tag. Enter, now what will happen, you created the image and you are pushing it to your Docker hub. From there, anybody who wants can take that image and use it. Let me just push, push. And this came, so let me clear all these things, come here, go to explore, sorry, repositories. This is my login, repositories, see here, let me just refresh this guy. And I can see, Vikas two four seven seven five, EVN NGX, few seconds ago, and if I go inside, I can see my version. One point six seven, if I want to go inside, I will see the code that we have written, with some transformation, the CMD bin uh. Update, install, install, so all these commands are here and this CMD is there, and then some copy command goes there, so all these things will be here. So basically what I'm trying to do is, I'm just now written a Docker file, using that Docker file, I ran Docker build. I ran my own set of commands and I. Went ahead and installed that particular piece of code, okay. If this file is somewhere else, then in that case you will have to go ahead and give the full path, so the question is that if I am running this. Docker run command, sorry, Docker build command. Look, where was that Docker build command, okay, it's not there. So if you're running the Docker build command and the path is somewhere else. Docker file, right, so you can see Docker build, okay, minus T, whatever name you want to give, give, the Docker file is somewhere else. Then give the path. And then. Docker file, like this, I can give the path, but for me it is here only, so I've given, dot. Now, whatever commands I have used, I have put everything here, in this file I have shared with you, Docker file. How I ran it, what I have done, all these things I have posted, the only thing is when you are practicing, do not use Vikas nine nine. Vikas two four seven seven five, that is mine, I have the username and password for that, you create your own and use it with that. Now, I'll again unmute you, please, if you have any questions, we will take it from here.
Uh yes, please, I've got a question. So I see that, you know when you create this Docker, this container, and. You've used the, you're basically you you'll use a name like um your Docker uh credential. And Docker name, and then you, the 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 con uh container name as well. Now, my question is, what does it do, it just creates a container in your EC two machine, and at the same time, does it um. Push an image to your Docker repo?
Yes, that's what I'm trying to do, see, at the end of the day, I did some development on my local machine, I tested it by creating a image. Creating a container, it is working perfectly for me, so there is a requirement in my company which say that it is is to be used by other people also. So I'll share it with my other team members, now here I'm using a public repo, so anybody can come and take the content, so this is a public content. Anybody can come and take it, but the moment I have a private repository, this will be only and only used by the folks in my project.
Okay, but my question to you is, whenever you want to share an image. Or push it to your private or public repo, you always have to create a container for that?
Yes, no, no, not container, image, you have to create an image for that.
Yeah, but right now what you've done is a Docker run, isn't it?
Yes, but that that run was for my local machine, for, I just wanted to check. Docker PS minus A, so this is for my local, I I just wanted to check whether it is running or not on my local machine. But in case you want to push the image, you have to push this guy, this guy. And when I was running this Docker push command, you see I have pushed the image, I'm not pushing my container, I told, container is a. Is a running version, so you don't deal with the running versions, rather you go ahead and deal with the static version, this is what we have done here.
Okay, but my, my question is, so you know when you do this Docker run, you've done two things, you've created this container. And at the same time, you pushed the image to your.
Those are two separate things, you are getting confused here, those are two separate things which I have done.
Yes, okay, so why do you mention uh your repo name when you.
Because that that is required, because it is going to be linked here. It is going to be linked here, so that's the reason, because you can also say e- even NGX, how will it recognize that this is done by Vikas two four seven seven five? So this is a unique identifier followed by the name, so this is how the. Components work.
Okay, but you are creating a container, so that's my question, like that's why I understand, why do you need to mention that? Because you trust creating a container inside your machine, so what was, like if you want to push it, I understand, fine. Because it needs to find your repo, but now I don't understand why do you need to mention if it is uh your repo name when you create a container.
It is in, the the, this is my repository, when I say Docker hub, this is my repository, so I have to name it in a unique manner. And that's the reason I'm putting it here, if you simply try with a a random name. That does not uniquely identify that, okay, you are the owner of this, right now I can say that, okay, I am the owner of this particular image. So it is very important, you can try one thing, you can try pushing a image without mentioning this tag, you can try, if it works for you. Please remove the stack and try pushing it. Let's try it once.
Yeah, yeah, no, no, I understand for this Docker push, but for the Docker, okay, now I get it, you, so when you create this container, it has to be within unique name. But the container, you're not gonna push it to your repo.
I'm again saying, container is a separate thing altogether, container is a running version. If you remember my example of a matchbox, matchstick and a fire, I told, the matchstick can stay in the matchbox. If I talk about my Docker hub, only the images can stay there, the containers never go to any. Hub or any such location, so whenever I'm saying I'm pushing the image, it is image which is getting pushed onto my Docker hub. I will request you to do the recordings for yesterday.
I did watch your recording, I did watch, but my question is, when you, when you, when you run this container, you still gave this your repo name, that's why.
Ah, that will, that will, because this container is running out of this image, so it will, it is as per the design.
Hello.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Yeah, uh, me, I have a little worry with respect to the commands that you are passing.
Yes, these, these commands are present here, you can take all the commands from here.
Yes, oh, my worries is, when you are putting the negative Y, negative A dash Y dash A dash D. Oh, we don't know what, I in particular, I don't know what dash Y means, or.
Why, why, why I told you that it's a yes, because when you run a command, they, it will ask, it will prompt you for a message. Do you want to proceed, so there's no one who will say, yes, I want to proceed, so in that case, I have to go ahead and mention minus Y.
And then dash A dash D.
Dash A is for all, so I told you use a Docker cheat sheet, there you will find all these things, but anyhow, I'll cover it in the class also.
Uh yeah, just one more question.
I, I have a question.
About this run, uh this third line, and because this is. Uh this third line, um because this is the the base image is NGINX. Now you are using this um A P T and then you are updating it. But you you didn't uh use that uh from and then use like a second base image as you went to.
No, second is not required because this is already there. So it's the layered approach. So I'll put it like this. So one set is already available. So one set is already available. On top of that NGINX is done. On top of that, you take your image. So this is a layered approach which we are taking here.
So it means that inside this when you've downloaded this um NGINX image, there is this you went to running inside.
Yes, the winter is already running inside and that is what I showed you when it is. Uh what I say it's a layered image. I will, I will uh take your questions. Yeah.
Hello. If you create that two volume, so Patty, if you hear the size of uh volume. We have a two uh two volume uh but. Volume one, volume two, and I want to volume one, two, and at that.
Man, your voice is breaking. I'm not able to hear you.
Hello.
Yeah.
Yep, can can we declare the size of uh.
While while teaching, I told you that the size cannot be declared. If you want, we can, but. In Docker, there are limitations. While teaching Kubernetes, I'll tell you how these limitations can be taken care of.
Is AWS charging you for? For what you push to in a Docker hub?
No, as of now, no, I'm using every under free there, no.
Okay, then what if what a vulnerability? Because I noticed you're not using the latest.
Yeah, so these.
I noticed you're not using the latest email. So how do you mitigate? Maybe somebody has a malicious, the malicious, oh, somebody's.
There's a lot of noise.
Uh Vikas, Monish here.
Yeah.
Uh see now you're you pulled the images and you created the images and everything, right? So now the Docker is having the internet connection. I'm interesting to run on my.
Then you have to put it on your intranet. Then then that has to go on your intranet. That is a different scenario altogether. You just want it private. So you have to keep it in your private.
So, okay, now I have the one internet machine. One is a non-internet uh internet machine. So when I pull the image, where it's locating, where it is loading, where it is copying the data.
In the Docker area.
So where live Docker are in area or.
That 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 area only.
There only that images will be available.
Lip that there is a path here. If you go to that path, war lip, backslash images, there it will be.
Okay, so that images I can copy into the. Any pen drive or anything and we can know, sorry.
I I think yes, but you are putting it on a on a local intranet, right? I doubt that will happen, but if you are using, you can try that man. I have not tried taking it out of a drive or anything like that, but. From one report to another, it can be posted. Many voice is not clear, man. Can you can you write it on the chat window?
Doc, Docard's are.
Docker swarm will come later. Man, don't get confused. Let's talk only about the topics which we have covered today. Docker swarm, Docker compose, Kubernetes, all will come later.
And I have one question. Uh sorry, Qory, what's your. Can you. Next, next.
Yes, I'll take it in the next session. Your internet is not good. You are not able to hear you. Your voice is going on.
Install the Linux.
Hi Vikas.
Yeah.
Hi, yes, after if you if you if you pull the image to the Docker upgrade in the in case if if I want to do some edit. The if other people go and edit, it will be able to change in my in my like like a Docker container also. Is it?
No, no, container cannot change. See, you are you can change on the image level. If you want to, suppose you have changed that image, then you have to bring that container again like that.
So it is accessible for only the person who going to upload only or.
If it is a shared location, then anybody can access. No, what's the problem? See, if you have access, five people have access, anybody can come and take it.
Okay, okay, sir, okay.
Fine, I'll drop now. I'll take questions in the class tomorrow. See you then, guys.
Okay, thank you.